Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte, State of California is now back in regular session. Only those items that are scheduled for a specific time will be heard at that time. All other items may be taken out of sequence for staff and public availability. Before we get started, as has been the custom here, we've had a moment of reflection, and I would ask that perhaps special consideration should be given for all the victims, the families of the victims, and the first responders who are also part of the victims of the tragedy that happened in San Bernardino and remember our county family as well. Now I'd ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by the CAO Jay Serena.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Introduction to employees. Do we have any? Nope. Okay. How about a report out of closed session, counsel?
No reportable action.
Okay. This time the chair requests any deletions, additions, or corrections to the agenda. Are there any such? No. Okay. Yes?
I'm not sure if these are scheduled every Friday, but I have a schedule for a letter to the Fish and Game Commission that we can forward this time in consideration of people in property of this letter, January 29th.
And what number are you referring to?
I have a 21.
It's, there's no corrections or deletions. We'll just talk about it when it shows up, 21. Okay. All right. Then we're going to stick with the agenda as it is, and at this time I'd ask for brief reports from our fellow supervisors and Supervisor Hemmingson.
Okay. I'd love to share for you.
You're not going to read all those pages, are you?
No, I wasn't going to read any of these pages. I'm looking for the pa- oh, I'm just reading them. Sorry. Apologize. Well, I enjoyed Thanksgiving out of the area with my wife and family and friends. Had a local area formation commission meeting. I filled in for Chair Finnegan on agenda review. Had a North Deal meeting, which is with the Caltrans people telling us about the projects that we've got going in District One. We had some discussion on the 197, 199 project. Caltrans has committed to that. They're wrapping up a couple of funding issues, and hopefully we'll get going on that. We talked about Last Chance Grade. It's getting a lot of attention statewide and nationally, so we're looking, not looking forward to any of it, but hopefully we can get some action going on that. The sensors, the new sensors that they've placed out there for movement are all in place and working. The next phase will be a monitoring, a self-monitoring apparatus and lighting that will, if the, if the movement of that slide is more than six inches, it will flash a warning sign telling you to stop and proceed with caution. So that's kind of a neat little deal, and hopefully they'll get that in soon. The Dr. Fine Bridge is proposed to start construction in 2019. Other notes, well, its bypass is 87% complete and should be open the fall of 2016. There was also a little bit of discussion on bridging the digital divide, which is when Caltrans has a project while they're there doing work, whether it be a bridge, whether it be road construction, that they can put conduit in to accept fiber optics or whatever lines that, yeah, and it costs them pennies per foot if they do it while they're in construction, and it costs them dollars per foot if they do it after the construction. So that's, that's pretty exciting stuff. Went to Santa Rosa and testified before the Joint Committee on Fisheries and Aquaculture about the issue that we're having now with demotic acid and Densilus crab. Hearing went very well. Testing results have been a little bit slow in coming out of the Department of Health, so we're trying to get that speeded up a little bit, although the ocean conditions are not good right now for even going out and retrieving the crab for testing. But the levels have come down significantly. We're almost to the point of having clean tests, so we're looking forward to that. Had a conference call with water quality. The, the report that they gave us, I think it was about a year ago, not much change in anything, or little or no change really, in what they had to report before, and so we'll keep an eye on that. Had a tri-agency meeting yesterday, as well as a call, a conference call, Supervisor Howard and I, with Eric Sklar, who is the new fishing game commissioner, or one of the new appointed fishing game commissioners. That's about it for me.
Very good. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I too had a great Thanksgiving with family. I was out of the area, and we made it back home safe and sound, and there's nothing like coming down Crescent City Hill and seeing Crescent City and knowing that you're home, which is always fun. I, the senior center, we're continuing with the, doing the employee handbook and using that incredible program that asks questions and you respond to, and it helps you write your employee handbook so you know that you're making all of the right statements in it, that you're not leaving anything out. Redwood Park Association had, we had our meeting, and then nothing to report out there. I filled in for Supervisor Gitlin for LAFCO, and they reviewed the Big Rock Water District's operating plan and their future. The primary thing that's happening there is that their, their water tank is in a pretty slippery slope, literally, and that if it were to go, it would be 100,000 gallons of water would be running into residences in Hiuchi. So it does appear that there is a very good grant that has been applied for, that they're going to receive. The, probably the biggest issues on the horizon for them is to make sure that the county, because there's easements and there's property owners, and, and that we need to make sure that we are assisting the Big Rock Water District as much as possible in order to get this completed, because we don't want to have 100,000 gallons of water on the streets of Hiuchi. I had a very interesting meeting with the Nataline and Colin. Nataline is from Epic, and Colin is from the Coalition for Responsible Government, for Responsible Transportation. And we had a very frank discussion, they wanted to talk about our road plans, and we had a very frank discussion. I tried to turn them to, starting to have a conversation with Tamara Layton, because that would be the appropriate person to be going to. They also wanted to talk about that in our last road plan, we didn't talk a lot about Last Chance, and now Last Chance is at the top. They questioned why the county was so involved with 199 and pushing for the improvements on 199. And it, literally, we finally got to a point where I was, I said, "Look, you guys can continue to hold, have lawsuits, and I can only ask you, how is that working for you?" And I think I convinced them that it's time for Epic and Caltrans and the county and every, all of the players, all of the stakeholders, to sit down, and let's talk about how 199 is going to be approached and how we're going to fix the bridge and the turnouts. And I, and I think they left the meeting going, you know, maybe that is a better pathway to try to sit together as stakeholders, because they are seeing that the stakeholding, the stakeholders' meetings that are happening with Last Chance are moving forward, and they're finding places to get agreement. So I'm hoping that that is going to actually come to fruition. I also participated in, RHS is having a, a group that is, we're, that are trying to wrap their, their hearts and minds around what to do about the unhoused population in our community. And primarily, this group has decided, you know, we can't take the whole, everyone on at one time. And so this group is thinking that we should just take a look at vets and try to come up with a plan for transitional housing for veterans that are unhoused. And there have been a number of identified, that have been identified, and now our next steps are to try to identify the funding source and identify a location, and it's moving forward, and I think that that, that's a little kind of bright light on the horizon of, of people getting together to find solutions to pretty big problems. I also participated in the Christmas bazaar that was held for the three days. I was at the Historical Society table. We sold lots of books on Del Norte County history and lots of little tchotchkes about fishing and that kind of thing. But the biggest thing I want to report out about the Historical Society is that years and years ago, it was located that up in Portland at a oyster bar the wheel of the Brother Jonathan sits. And it's beautiful. I traveled there, I went there about three years ago and took them all of the books that we had and said, "Hey, if you ever want to get rid of this wheel, we're here." So then they called, and they're ready to get rid of the wheel. The problem is, is that when I first started talking to him, he thought that maybe it should go on sale for about a million dollars. Needless to say, we are not interested. I mean, we're interested in the wheel, but we can't afford a million dollars. And then last week, he contacted me again, and it's down to 100,000. So if anybody in the community has $100,000 that they would like to donate to the Historical Society to bring home the Brother Jonathan wheel, it would be greatly appreciated, but to try to figure out a way that we could possibly get the wheel into our museum and our community. And I haven't found a solution for that yet, but I'm working on it.
Good. Supervisor Howard. Take a new building, too.
Outstanding. $100,000.
Or a wheel.
The wheel. Great, great discussions this, this last couple of weeks since Thanksgiving. Been really busy. I attended, along with Chair Finnegan, the annual California State Association Counties Meeting in Monterey. It's extremely informative, and it just went to remind me how important it is for Del Norte County to be paying attention to our issues at the state level. It is critical to our needs, especially when you have an association which we pay membership dues into but are greatly involved in, mostly through the efforts of Chair Finnegan and his relentless pursuit to maintain himself on boards and committees within the association. And, and how that helps us is that there's always legislation being formed at the state level, and that legislation directly affects how Del Norte County operates into the future. And some of that legislation, especially legislation that comes with either pros and cons out of the association, can be formed by association members, which Chair Finnegan participates in on. And I watched as discussions and committees took place this week, more importantly, around things that affect us. One of them in particular was Prop 47, that we, as a community, have seen the effects of here, but the association helped to craft language on how that looked going forward to the state legislatures. But Prop 47 in particular, listening to how other counties have dealt with it, more importantly, how recidivism has taken place with revisitation of jails, or how more releases have taken place, which has resulted in increased homelessness on our streets. It was very frustrating to hear our fellow supervisors and how they're reacting to these various problems, and how the sheriffs and judges within those communities are reacting to those problems. And that how we, as an association, need to revisit Prop 47 to really look at some of the fixes that are necessary that weren't foreseen when it originally rolled out. We discussed water rights. We discussed issues around fire, in particular with Lake County and Calaveras County that were hit extremely hard in the state this year. We, we were lucky compared to them. They're still dealing with the effects of those fires and homelessness to this date. And there are ways to deal with fire in this community, but it's the efforts that are had through these associations, and more importantly, putting pressure on the state, Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. And then in addition, putting pressure on, at a national level, and the Forest Service, who has these budgets, well over 90% of their budget, towards fire control after it occurs, not necessarily prevention. So there's, there's ways that we need to focus our energies and these associations really help do it. I hope Chair Finnegan really expands on the award that we received as a coalition of the regional counties around marijuana initiatives and getting a handle on that before they appear. We listened to folks from Washington State and also the folks from the RAND Drug Policy Research Institute out of Harvard discuss how some of these marijuana regulations might affect us going into the future. And it was very interesting to listen to how those discussions shaped policy within some of the communities that are currently already affected, like in Washington, Oregon, and in Denver, Colorado. But more importantly, if we can learn from some of those lessons, that those communities have, that have already rolled out legalization through either medical or recreational purposes, we could take those lessons and roll them into policies here, that the county will eventually have to act on in ordinances. And so it was very educational in that respect. Looking at solid waste, there was quite a bit of discussion there, especially around some initiatives around organic waste recovery that is going to be coming to our doorstep in the very near future, and how there will be a zero-waste policy around organic waste. That could be extremely significant for us, because I can recall not too long ago, when businesses in our community that did a zero-waste policy around organic waste recovery, specific to organic biomass, was faced with doing that, and they took every bit of organic biomass that came through the gates of the transfer station, but they composted that, and then were faced essentially with cease and desist orders from the North Coast Air Quality Control Board. So there's got to be a balancing act here. And we have policies that roll out at the state level, but we don't always know how those policies are going to affect us, and so that's something that we've got to pay a great deal of attention to. We heard a great discussion at lunch from Governor Jennifer Granholm, who was the previous governor of the state of Illinois. She gave an extraordinary motivational-type speech about her lessons learned as she was governor from 2003 through 2011 during some pretty harsh economic downturns that really affected her state greatly, specifically with jobs in the automotive industry. But listening to her discussion, I felt compelled to step up our game as a community, step up my game as a county, to find those areas, those clusters, those collaborative efforts that we, as a government, can help support to create jobs in our community, whether it's around tourism, whether it's around agricultural-type resources. We do have niches here that we could expand on. One of the things that Governor Granholm had discussed was around renewable energy. It is the future and the way things are going here, and not only in the state of California, but across the country, and how you can develop specific jobs around those renewable sources that will help sustain your community going forward into the future. We also heard from a speaker named Connie Podesta. It was really great. She's a therapist. We all learned whether or not we were a circle, whether or not we were a square, whether or not we were a triangle, whether or not we were a squiggly line. And I did find out that Chairman Finnegan is not a square, which is good, because we all thought he might have been a square, but no, it's not the case. A lot of us, a lot of us leaders fell into this basic category of being a circle, which we like to touch, feel, tell stories, and hug, and hug. So I did get a hug from Chair Finnegan after the meeting, which confirmed he was a circle. So, even though he didn't put a circle on his name tag, which we were all asked to do after that discussion. So some great discussions there at CSAC, but more importantly, I do want to emphasize the importance of us being involved in that association and reflect on the efforts that Chair Finnegan, everybody here on that board, continue to make our voices heard at a state level. It's so extremely important going forward to this community. Participated briefly with Commissioner Skylark with the California Department Fishing Game Commission. We have some big issues to discuss there around elk and with the closures around Blue Creek, starting tomorrow. Chair Finnegan, or Chair Hemmingson and I will be traveling to San Diego for those discussions. We had a tri-agency meeting yesterday. We did discuss issues about producing a tourism report here to follow up on the 2006, 2007 report of the investment of public funds in tourism. So hopefully the council of economic advisors that helps promote economic development-type activities in our community and advise tri-agency could look for additional funding to produce a report and a follow-up to see if those public funds were expended wisely. We also talked about the upcoming SEDS report, which is the Community Economic Development Strategy, a report that's due every two years and helps generate grant income to our communities. If we don't have it, we really can't move forward with requesting some of this grant income, so we have to take a look at that fairly soon. And then as Supervisor Hemmingson highlighted, discussions around the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. Rebecca Fitzgerald had reached out to me earlier in the week and requested that she present to the, both the groundwater and surface water monitoring that the water board has been doing here specifically in our community. As you all know, we've had issues raised in this community around agricultural uses in the Smith River Plain. That groundwater was out, that groundwater monitoring is out there looking at those, and they have results back. Those reports now are available on the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board's website, and they look really good. They look really good. But there's still information and monitoring that's being done, and hopefully by next year, we'll have some of that wrapped up at that time. That's all I have. Chair.
Great report. I also celebrated Thanksgiving and took a little bit of time with the city Christmas parade, which was very nice. And then most of my time was spent at the CSAC Annual Conference, and, you know, in the past, we've had supervisors who've gone there. I know, Chris, you've gone before, and Jerry, you've attended, and before then Supervisor Sullivan and Blackburns and whatnot. But I really appreciate Supervisor Howard, not just showing up, but becoming intimately involved in the discussions and attending the, the programs, but it's just not attending it, it's bringing it back. So we all attend, but really getting in and being part of it, because, you know, my history is I'll go find something, and it's, it's okay to find something good, but unless you bring it back and introduce it here, it really, you don't reap the full benefit. So I really appreciate that. Yes, we did get the CSAC 2015 Collaboration Award for the North Coast Counties Marijuana Policy Statement. Of course, you gear it towards medical marijuana and how you're going to deal with it, the environmental aspects, the taxing aspects, the health aspects, but also, distribution, but also with an eye towards what's going to happen with legalization. And I'm going to let Jay report out on that. Himself and Supervisor Hemmingson were involved on behalf of Del Norte County, and I think you weighed in too, Supervisor Howard. In the five counties, they had Humboldt, Del Norte, Mendocino, Sonoma, and I believe Trinity. So excellent partnership was recognized. We have a trophy upstairs, nice glass piece in the board office. At the meeting, I was also elected as one of two rural county supervisors to serve next year on the Executive Board of Directors of the State Association. So consider that quite an honor, be myself, and Supervisor Valenzuela from Siskiyou Counties will be the two rural representatives on that executive board, and then, of course, we also sit on the regular Board of Directors. The, there, had an opportunity, and I'm going to try not to repeat some of, you know, what Supervisor Howard had to say. He had a great presentation there, but I sat on a panel while I was there regarding the road usage charge with Will Kempton from the California Transportation Commission, as well as Norma Ortega from Caltrans, explaining what it was about, how it was going to be implemented, and of course, hit with a barrage of questions. And my slant was that we really, as rurals, need to be involved in the structure of this, keeping an eye on the difference, you know, there's a matrix that needs to be developed. There's a difference between driving 10 miles in LA County when your infrastructure is only one mile away and you have rapid transit, as opposed to somebody in Del Norte County that has to go 40 miles. So it's not just on road miles traveled that it needs to be based on. There'll be different weight classes, there'll be, like I said, matrices for urban and suburban and rural. Taking into consideration people, somebody brought up the ag community in the Central Valley, sometimes they have to travel 30 miles to get to work. Well, we have loggers and fishermen, but especially the loggers that work in the woods that may travel 40, 50 miles to get to work, and so there has to be some consideration for that. So it was a nice panel, and I'll be leaving here. We finally, after a year of meeting, are ready to submit, will be voting on the final package to submit back to the legislature, see where they take it. Also had a nice conversation with Sunny McPeak, who was the Secretary of Commerce and Economic Development with the state. She came out of Social Services, county supervisor in Contra Costa, and then was an Assemblywoman before serving on the cabinet. Now she is working with California Emerging Technology Group, or California Emerging Technology Fund, championing broadband and the connectivity. And, but, we had a nice conversation regarding service integration with social services, something that we're paying a little more attention to here, and asked me if I might want to contribute at state level to take a hard look at results-based and maybe focusing more intently on each case rather than every case, and more to come on that in the future. Supervisor Hemmingson brought up the thing about conduit regarding broadband, and, you know, at the last meeting we had with the CTC, myself and Will Kempton, and Will has been a champion of this when he was at Caltrans as well as the CTC, it's very frustrating that Caltrans can go ahead and do a bridge or do a road and not drop the conduit in there. We did that dig once here at the county, but I think we've talked about it. We had no force over Caltrans, so it's nice to see that happening. With that, I think we've all been done a lot, or done a lot in the last couple of weeks. We're going to do some more, obviously, over the Christmas vacations, but right now, let's hear from the, aside from calls from constituents, which I'm sure they all won't be to wish us well and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, but that we will continue to work for you.
Yeah, I did just have one, one little note at the Caltrans meeting that I had. They are planning on being here on the meeting that we have on the 26th of December, or January, so we look forward to that presentation by Caltrans.
Good. And I think CAO Serena is also going to make sure that we have representative from, maybe John Driscoll, somebody from the congressman's office here as well, which is a great segue to report out from the CAO.
Well, over the last couple of weeks, I've attended some of those conference calls that were already reported on, water quality, and the, the conference call yesterday with Mr. Sklar with the Fishing Game Commission. Also had conference calls with Housing Community Development staff regarding CDBG. I had a conference call with Humboldt County regarding our ag commissioner and duties, and had multiple meetings with staff and departments, department heads, met with council, prepared evaluations. Also had negotiations and meetings regarding IHSS, the in-home support specialists, and will report out that we will be signing a contract with the Department of Agriculture for the AFIS Trapper, hopefully this week. I think the language is done. It'll get us through the rest of this fiscal year, and then we can then look at how we would be funding something that might be expanded upon in the future.
Good. We are going to go to public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address this board on any items under the purview of the board. Any member of the public wish to address us? No? Okay. Then let's go to a timed item at 10:30, which would be to waive the full reading and introduce proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 7.65, Section 7.65.030, which is to update the membership formula for the Del Norte County Partnership Health Plan of California Commission as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. We should have got you the traveling microphone.
No, no, we're good. It's a good exercise. Good morning. This is an amendment to our agreement with partnership. They base the number of representatives on their Board of Directors on the population, the number of Medi-Cal patients that they serve in each district, in each county. So they have changed the formula, but our representatives still stay at one and I'm their current representative. So they're just asking us to sign the agreement even though it will not change the number of people that represent the county.
Okay. And that was my question is whether or not the 25,000 was just Medi-Cal recipients or whether it was population? And if it was population, does it include Pelican Bay?
It is the number of recipients.
Okay. Any questions? Can I get a motion, please? Actually, we have to have a public comment. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. And for waiving the full reading, read by title only, introduce the ordinance. Any comments on the ordinance? Back to the board. All those in favor? Can I get a motion?
I move that we waive the full reading and read in title only and introduce an ordinance amending Delmar County Chapter, Delmar County Code, Chapter 7.65, Section 7.65.030 to revise the membership formula to the multi-county partnership health plan of California Commission.
Second.
Poll of vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. And with that, we will continue this for the, have an consent agenda for the second reading, at which time the public may also weigh in. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the consent agenda. Any public comment on any item that is in the consent agenda? Back to the board. Questions, comments? Poll of vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. And in the consent agenda, item number two is to approve and adopt a resolution observing Seroptimist International of Crescent City and their Stop Trafficking Awareness Campaign regarding human trafficking. I'm going to ask Supervisor McClure to read it. Before I do, I want to mention that CSAC has taken this up as one of their primary issues, did have a workshop on it. It is widespread than people have any imagined. It has a negative impact on communities as well as human beings individually than anybody can imagine and glad that we have the opportunity to highlight this here as well. Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. This is Resolution Number 2015-085, a resolution of Delmar County Board of Supervisors observing Seroptimist International of Crescent City Stop Trafficking Awareness Campaign, January 11, 2016. Whereas Seroptimist International is committed to improving the lives of women and girls in local communities and throughout the world, and whereas the Seroptimists launched its trafficking awareness campaign project called Seroptimist Stop Trafficking on January 11, 2009, the National Day of Human, of the National Day of Human Trafficking Awareness, and whereas Seroptimist International of Crescent City has joined with Seroptimists around the world to raise awareness about the devastating problem of human trafficking, sexual exploitation, and slavery. And whereas human trafficking is, is the movement of people for the, for the purpose of commercial sexual exploitation and promised legitimate work. And whereas human trafficking is a worldwide epidemic with an estimated 20 to 30 million people in some form of slavery today, and it's the third largest criminal enterprise. And whereas it is estimated that more than 20,000 people are trafficked in the United States each year, and whereas we must all work together to end human trafficking and sexual exploitation around the world and in our local communities throughout, through education, and whereas all persons should, should actively oppose and report individuals, groups, or organizations who support, advance, or commit acts of human trafficking and sexual exploitation. And whereas Seroptimist International of Crescent City is promising human trafficking awareness locally by hosting a public educational forum on January 11, 2016 at College of the Redwoods, now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors opposes human trafficking, sexual exploitation, and promotes, and promotes human trafficking awareness throughout the month of January, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, Delmar County, State of California, on the 8th day of December 2015.
Thank you very much for that proclamation. My name is Benita Cabrera and I am a Seroptimist member of Crescent City. And we, in fact, will be having a forum on January 11 at College of the Redwoods from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We have speakers talking about trafficking from Humboldt County, Delmar County, and Curry County. And we'll have a panel of about six folks for a discussion panel afterwards. So the panel will be about from 7 to 8. We'll have anywhere from eight to 12 agencies giving out information about the services they provide to abused folks, women and girls, and men as well. And we really hope that the community comes out for this because it's our one time of year to be able to highlight human trafficking and bring awareness to the devastating effects that it has on all communities, even if you don't realize it. Folks who are trafficked are moved from place to place and they travel our highways to get them there and they stay in our motels when they get to where they're stopping. And I can promise you, they're conducting business in our hotels and motels in our community behind our backs. So now it's our responsibility as Seroptimists and as a board and as a community to educate as many people as we can to be aware of the signs of trafficking and the potential of helping someone. So our goal is to educate hotel and motel employees and managers in January about trafficking so that they're more aware and those kinds of things can't just happen under their noses without their knowledge. So I have flyers, they're really bad quality because I downloaded it from my Facebook and tried to print it at Delmar Office, so they don't look very good, but it has all the pertinent information on it. So thank you for your time and consideration of this matter today.
Thank you.
Can we ask that you, if we could display them in county offices, please?
Jeanne Galatiero. We're asking that you give permission to have these posted within county offices or outside county offices so that people can become more aware. We're also ordering pens, ink pens, that will have a number on them so that people that are trafficked, sometimes they're in a situation where they can't, they don't know who to call and it'll have a hotline number for them. So we're trying to leave those in motels and restaurants and things like that so people have access to them.
Excellent. Fantastic. Yes, please. Give it to Kylie and make sure they get passed out. Thank you very much.
Chair?
Yes.
Real briefly, since you did bring up CSAC and, and CSAC's focus on this issue, you know, one of the conversations at CSAC around this issue that just surprised the heck out of me, and I guess it shouldn't surprise me, but it's, it's basically around the loss of supply and demand and it, when one industry begins to go down, in this case drugs, and gangs having access to drugs and being able to sell those at a certain profit margin, when that gets lowered, those unintentional consequences from essentially legalization of certain drugs within the state of California has increased and directly affected what we're talking about here today with sexual exploitation of the young. And I was really surprised to hear that, but at least the issue has been identified and we know where to target our efforts.
Right. I'm glad you brought that up. We talked about that at RCRC and will continue to. It's just not Los Angeles, San Diego, San Francisco, the big cities. It's the I-5 corridor. It used to be the meth highway and now it's drug trafficking and it is in the rural counties. They're coming through here and they're staying here and they're making money here. So thank you very much. With that, did I ask council to report out a closed session? Well, good. I crossed it off, but I didn't remember. Let's go to budget transfers. There are three of them there.
Move to approve budget transfer 12-01, 12-02, and 12-03.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Public comment on these. These are within the OES budgets requested by the Assistant County Administrative Officer. Nope? Okay. Before we poll the vote, even budget transfers have an impact. So when we check that box, it says no impact, I guarantee that it makes for safer families, community for families. Poll of vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. Which brings us to item 17, which is to accept the Fred Haight Drive Reconstruction Project as complete.
Woo-hoo. Yay! Years in the making.
It's over. You have any questions, comments?
Can I get a motion to accept the completion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Public comment? Nobody wants to weigh in on this fantastic project? Back to the board. Supervisor Howard?
It was a great job and I'm glad to see we were resilient enough to follow through on this because as you all both know, as you especially as Community Development Department know, it took a long time and an amazing amount of effort to get it there. But just reporting back from the Smith River community, they are really happy with the elk project. So good job and thanks for the first of the variants.
Great job. And I'm also going to thank you on behalf of Art Reeves and Supervisor Blackburn and Supervisor Sullivan. Poll of vote, or, yeah, poll of vote.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. Which takes us to discuss the action and adopt resolution authorizing membership with the California Coastal Trail Association Crosswalk as requested by Supervisor McClure and before her Supervisor Greg Cox.
This is, last year we joined and they're asking us to join again and being one of the communities with the coastal walk and this is primarily Greg Cox and I think CSAC and League of Cities have tried to pull this together so we can make sure that the coastal trail ultimately becomes completed. And this is an advocacy group that supports that. I apologize that I, I tried to bring up their official paper that's in the agenda, but my computer has been very stubborn.
And Delmar County is a member of CSAC through the Coastal Counties Association, also has been partnering with this.
So I think it's a good bargain.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, I move that we, that we authorize membership for the California Coastal Trail Association.
And I will second that, but I did want to know what the, who the contact is. Who, who do they contact in our organization? Do they, do they go through CDD? Do they, I mean?
They would probably go through Jay.
For our input, is that you, Jay? Is that who, is that who they talk to?
I would assume that they would go through either administration or to the Board of Supervisors, which obviously would be the same, basically.
But do?
Through Kylie or myself.
But do we contact them? Do we tell them what we want? What, what's the, what's the process here as far as getting something? From what I understand, they do advertising, they'll help you with maps, they'll do that. Do we ever have a request? Do we ever do those types of things? I'm just curious about it.
We didn't last year. That was our first year. Obviously, the outreach typically for, you know, trails and such would include CDD. I think the Resource Committee could be one of those or the future facilities and infrastructure also, so we could put priorities together. Typically, and for several years, the priorities have been the coastal trail and Point St. George and we're in a kind of a lull on funding, so it'll be, you know, we do have a, still have an area along Pebble Beach for the coastal trail that would like, we'd like to get finished at some point, too.
Yeah. I am in supportive of these, you know, memberships like this that we, we pay just a little bit and we seem to get an awful lot out of them. So I think, I think it's a good thing.
Public comment? Back to the board and poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. I think nobody notated, what, $750 as our membership?
Bargain.
Great bargain. Number 19 is to approve the Title III funding application submitted by the planning, requesting 15,000, I almost said million, put my glasses back on, for the, this is for the County Natural Resources Planner and Coordinator.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, 15 million would be very generous of you. We would, we would accept that. I don't think there's that much in the fund, though.
I don't think the state would give us that much, but what the heck?
So if you recall, this item is, returning item was previously considered by the board. Procedurally, the way the steps have to go with the Title III application is we need to get direction to process the application first. We've done that. We've done outreach to the, to the RAC, to the Forest Service, and to the public. The 45-day period has passed and all the application is back before the board for approval. And again, this would be to offset the cost of potentially having a natural resources, natural resources planner, analyst-type position. The details of that would still need to be worked out with Senator McGuire's office. I would anticipate if the board does approve this application today, there will be some outreach to the Senator's office just to notify him that these funds have been earmarked for this purpose and to see what sources he can bring to the table.
Very good. I would move for approval of the Title III funding application.
Second.
Moved and seconded, public comment. Back to the board. Let's poll it just in case.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. Number 20 is to approve and authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement with Elk Valley Rancheria on behalf of the county of Delmar and Community Development. Want you to explain what it is.
All right. This is kind of a returner. We were approached by the Elk Valley Rancheria and Indian Health Service regarding a grant that they had received or funds that they had received from Indian Health Service to do wastewater improvements within the Crescent City urban area, essentially. The end result is they didn't have enough of their own projects, specific projects to do that, so they reached out to us seeing that we had not received the full allocation requests that we had asked for with the Prop 84 implementation funds. And so they have roughly $570,000 that they would like to make available to us very generously and we were tremendously excited because that, along with the $812,000 that the city and county should be awarded by Department of Water Resources for the Prop 84, will allow us to do the majority, if not all, of the improvements we need to our wastewater disposal lift stations.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it's fantastic. So I'm hoping, you know, if you do approve this today, that we will have some type of follow-up with the Elk Valley Rancheria to formally acknowledge our thanks for this offer of these funds.
Signing ceremony perhaps.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Can I get a motion?
A great partnership. I would move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Public comment?
I have a question.
Back to the board. Question?
Yeah, question for our director. Oftentimes with these, these grants, there's conditions and in particular with this one, there's likely a condition to track the populations of Native Americans being served by these projects. Is that going to be something that's going to be tracked by the county or the tribe?
The tribe. And the agreement is very specific about our responsibilities and they primarily have to do with, you know, project management, you know, obtaining the, you know, contractors and then following through with it. But beyond that, I believe it would be the tribe, but I could double check.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Just, Jerry already mentioned, these are the type of partnerships that make us all look good and really benefit the community, maximizing the dollars that we do have. Poll of vote, please.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan.
Yes. And with that, perhaps Heidi and Jay both, you can coordinate with Elk Valley Rancheria and let's really promote this as something very positive. Maybe even a photographer will show up.
Maybe.
It just always amazes me that supervisors get real excited about wastewater treatment projects, but that's the, that's the, where we need to start because that's the infrastructure that puts us forward, so.
And the city always wants to raise rates.
Yeah, there they go again. All right, let's go to 21, which is to discuss and authorize the board to send a letter to Fish and Game Commission regarding the new proposed regulations for the Klamath Basin Sport Fishery. Supervisor Howard?
Yes, as we've been encouraged by the Fish and Game Commission and specifically their Executive Director, Sonki Mastrop, which, who I believe is actually stepping down from that position to rejoin the, the Fish and Wildlife Department here shortly, it's, behooves us as a board to continue following these regulations closely, especially since this one snuck up on us because they didn't do their role in outreach to this board, which is specific to their policies. However, we are tracking this stuff closely and more importantly, we are following regulations around the Klamath and now more specifically, Blue Creek. Elizabeth Cable, County Counsel, has been diligent in her efforts to help the supervisors in our processes and forming conversation that we can direct to the commission this week in San Diego. My hope is, based on comments that we've received, specifically from Stafford and Laird, where the Department of Fish and Wildlife is now taking a position on keeping the closure current. currently permanent for this upcoming season, and pursuing an avenue of science instead of just closure. It continues to boggle my mind, in essence, because we do not have a listed species within the Klamath River that we're protecting around Blue Creek during these closures. The fall run Chinook is not listed, nor the summer run Steelhead is not listed yet. We're protecting it with these closures. And the department has now flipped 180 degrees to basically say, well, we're going to err on the side of caution, we're going to go out and do a study to see whether or not there are thermorifugia concerns at the Mouse of Blue Creek that could be affecting these populations. Yet, we know as a community, economically, we do rely on these fisheries, but more importantly, we do want to protect them, and if there is harm coming to these critters, we will advocate for that protection to occur. Yet, we don't know that. The science isn't there, and we're in a very delicate and political discussion with the tribes on these issues, plus a state agency that does affect, directly affect how we pursue our activities here in this community. So we have to have a voice in this because as we know economically, just the closure of that summer Steelhead run, which affected about 38 guides, had an impact well over $150,000 just for that three-week period. That's huge. So we have to be paying attention to that. I do not believe a letter will be necessary at this time because the proposal that will be discussed this week will actually consider increasing the quota within the Klamath this year. They are projecting an increased run of Chinook. However, we do have time. They'll be re-discussing this issue in February, and before they make a final decision, which will be at their May meeting. So we will have time to address it, but more importantly, if a letter is necessary, I'll make sure to bring that back up at our first meeting in January after we have a chance to hear from the commission.
So sensing that you don't think the letter's necessary at this time, however, we've seen how fast these things change and how they move, and would you want to consider that we authorize staff to draft such a letter should it be necessary at this time, rather than getting caught off-guard somewhere in January, February, or March?
I would say absolutely.
Okay, so by consensus, if and when you're called to write the letter?
I'll be more than happy to.
I hate to put it that way, but, and based on recommendations, we have a resource committee that the board has so authorized that.
Yeah, and if I could just, I mean, this, this just accentuates the issue of not having a resource planner or analyst.
Exactly.
This is so important. We get focused on one thing, and over here, something else has happened, and over there, something else has happened. We cannot be focused on all these things eight hours a day, five days a week. It just, it just does not work. We are always running around trying to put fires out, but no prevention. So we need somebody that can stay on top of this, which I've advocated since I've been a supervisor, to have some sort of resource planner, and hopefully that will come to fruition. I would really like to see that happen.
Excellent. Well, we've taken a couple of steps in today's meeting to do just that, so good work. How about, consider miscellaneous legislation or budget matters for the County of Delmar?
One of the primary, and this is at the federal level, issues is the recent approval of the FAST Act, which is the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act. The significance of that is, that's, I believe it's $205 billion worth of funding, and there are some programs within the FAST Act that could have a significant effect on the ability for Caltrans to go forward with large projects like Last Chance Grade. And it's expected that even though timelines are quick, because I think it's Friday of this week, there has to be action. The fact that the Senate and the House have an agreement, they expect Congress to take it up, approve it, and for the President to sign it, a couple of, well, one particular interesting part of it is that there, it doesn't include any increases in the gas tax, but there is no dedicated federal funding for this act at this time. So it's a lot of money, and they're going to have to hash this out, but the positives are that it's gone through the House, it's gone through the Senate, Congress will weigh in on it, and it looks like it'll get passed. Now it's about funding it for a period of time. This is a six-year bill, essentially, so they've got some work still to do. As far as our budget, we'll be working on mid-years coming up, beginning of January, so we won't hear much more until we get to that point, and then any significant issues we'll bring forward for, with recommendations.
And just reminding the department heads as they bring that forward to you, to keep an eye on the children's budget, that is to be an integral part of the budget process. Going back to the FAST Act, I do believe that they identified some of the funding. It's nice to hear it went from five to six years. It's not a continuing resolution, it's a long-term fix. They have identified some funding for it, and yes, I think it will be passed, especially because of both Republicans and Democrats coming together on this. There's been a lot of grandstanding about having to go talk to the Chair of the Appropriations Committee to make sure that Last Chance Grade is in there. Well, you know, that's grandstanding. The bottom line is the mechanism is there in the FAST Act. More importantly, because there wasn't a lot of grandstanding going over the years, what this represents, because I think for the last half dozen years, there's been continuing resolutions. Whether it's been work testifying before Senator Boxer's committee when she was in charge of it, whether it is working with the National Association of Counties Transportation Committee, testifying before the transportation committees back in DC, or working through CSAC, there are specific rural carve-outs, rural set-asides, if you will, that affect this county. And it has to do with projects, it has specifically to do with bridges, and it acknowledges the fact that while part of this bill is going to deal with at-grade crossings for railroads, it's going to have to do with shipping of interstate commerce regarding trucking routes. It also specifically address, a way to get appropriations for rural communities like our, and address our needs such as the bridges that this county is responsible for. So you should look at it as a major victory, rather than some of the people that might say, well, you didn't, you know, it is there. There is sufficient funds to deal with last chance in the timely manner that is allowed, specifically because it's going to be a multi-year funding thing. So I just, you know, those, I guess this is a preemptive thing to say, hey, we should be patting ourselves on the back, especially some of the people that are sitting up here now that have worked on it for the past half dozen years, but more importantly, the naysayers, there is no basis for it. This is a good deal. So, thank you. And with that, it is, go ahead.
I just have, this is the beginning of the legislative session. I mean, we should be talking and taking a hard look at our legislative platform, but I have a couple of issues that I, and I have no idea if McGuire or Wood's office would carry them, but I think that we should attempt to put forward a bill that demands and identifies the mechanism for PILT payments, and ask him to please carry that. And I also would like to see someone in the legislature, and it probably would be McGuire, to carry a fish and wildlife requirement, that they have a person in every county in California, of all of their employees of fish and wildlife, there needs to be people housed permanently in every one of the 58 counties because of the need that we have to, when we need a fish and wildlife person, we can't wait an hour and a half to get them if it's a, if it's an issue of one of the critters or whatever it is. But I just think that maybe we could demand that there actually be bodies placed in all 58 counties.
In response to the first one, in discussing some of the issues with Senator McGuire, he specifically brought up the first one, in that he is in a bipartisan effort looking for some language change that makes that a permanent payment on an annual basis, and also interhares, which is something that we need to very much focus on because that's the bulk of that funding, is interhares. And I believe that in our discussions regarding the resource position, he kind of alluded to the second one also. I don't know if you've had any discussions with his staff, but obviously, it's on the radar. But yeah, the sessions will be starting up after the first year, and we'll be, we'll be looking.
I just know that we want to start getting a letter together.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, first we look at our priorities, and then we specifically tie those priorities into any pending legislation or introduction, introduction of new legislation. So both for CSAC, RCRC, and our own. Supervisor Howard?
And Chair, just to reflect on some of the things that were discussed today, more specifically some of your comments, as a freshman supervisor here, and looking back on how this year has gone for us, we've had some great policy discussions, some have been knockout, drag-out, but more importantly, we accomplish quite a bit. And I'm not sure how we normally would do it, but I would like to request for either the new chair or the current chair, come January, whether it's our first or second meeting, to review back with our community, our accomplishments, which celebrate what we do.
I agree, and I know he's going to think it's dumping on him, but I think the CAO is in the perfect position to talk with the department heads and legislative analysts and see what we have done, accumulate that list, and then we can have a coin flip whether it's the old chair or the new chair, whoever it works out, or let the CAO do it and present it as coastal voices to the newspaper, something that we don't ever take credit, so.
And that has been an ongoing theme of not taking credit or not, not celebrating our successes.
Right.
You know, I've done some work with a couple of chairs in the past. It's been chair by chair as to whether or not they want to follow through with that with the direction of the board. I'll prepare that, and then we can, the board can decide who does that.
Good.
And I will work with the department heads to get that out.
And one last thing, I don't want it to be a knee-jerk reaction, but what happened in San Bernardino highlights the need to just, to pause and take stock of our own security for our own workforce, our own buildings. And perhaps our future facilities, in conjunction with OES, could review protocols. I know that the schools have lockdown procedures, but, and you can't prevent, you know, the WAC jobs. That's just the world we live in, but I think we should be proactive in what kind of security are we providing, whether it's at these meetings, whether it's in social services, mental health, and take a good look at that and develop any recommendations that this board might need to authorize in conjunction with OES. And with that, I would like to, yes?
Chair, just to give you, I noted on that, and without getting into details, because on some of this, it's very sensitive in regards to evacuation plans and other plans, but I know the sheriff is working on some things that will be brought back to the Board of Supervisors for training specifically for this area. And IT is currently working on a computer-based system for alerting people in regards to emergencies directly related to threats similar to something like San Bernardino. And so we will, the ones that can be publicized will typically go through future facilities and infrastructure, and those that are more sensitive, we're going to be working with council on how to get those implemented and trained without having those publicized so somebody could maybe take advantage of them. So it's real sensitive. And then OES has gone through active shooter training and classes with the schools. We have done that, I believe, in this building at one time, and we'll be looking at those trainings also.
Okay. Very good. Pending any emergency, this will be the last meeting of this year, so I would like to take the opportunity to thank all those that have participated from the public, thank my fellow supervisors for their hard work throughout the year. Would like to wish everybody a very happy Christmas, joyous holidays, and expect a wonderful new year. With that, meeting adjourned.